So that we might indeed, as Jake prayed this evening, with one heart move forward, doing your will, your way at this time and place. So bless our efforts, our meeting this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
It was neat to hear that because I think when like the first town, well, it wasn't the town halls, it was a voters' meeting, I think we got up here after we kind of started with the new positions on the board. We talked about, we're just going to be more present and interact with you all. And then there was a couple of things we needed to do. And one of those was after we shared information was, we're going to get a line and then move forward with unity. So it was really, really neat to hear that. Uh, I'm going to get out of the way and let these guys get started. But before they do, I just want to thank them for their work. As you're going to see, there's a lot of work that went into this during the town halls. Think the clear message, or not the town halls, a couple of the voters' meetings that happened recently. You guys were, the congregation was clear that they wanted more financial transparency. And so these guys have, Henry and Dan have been putting in a lot of hard work for about a year now. Um, and it's, and it's been great work, very sacrificial work. And so I'm really proud of them and the stuff they've done. And so they've, they've got a great presentation for you guys today. And I encourage you guys to ask questions today, or even if things come up after the fact, ask those questions and follow up with us. So Dan's going to be starting here in a second, but I wanted to, before doing anything else, just give credit where credit is due. Dan has put in more hours than he will even admit. Brought more brilliance to this than, um, it's when you get to work with amazing, amazing people. So before we even start, can we just give a round of applause to Dan? He is, I am so thankful for him. He, he's magic. And the other person that, I'm, I'm going to thank other people, and she's shaking her head no. But Tama, you, um, can you stand up and can we just say thank you to Tama? This woman has been through it for, she has watched transitions. She has worked through the hard stuff. She has stuck through it when I was so afraid she was just going to throw her computer at me and walk out. Um, and that was my first week. Um, so thank you for all that you've done. The other people, you have an amazing team here that does stuff behind the scenes unrecognized. Barb Bean is there in the office, um, doing so much data entry. Um, Nancy Burning, um, Joan Smith, Todd Simon, Stan Bebrick. And I know I'm probably missing people, but if you see those men and women say a thank you, they, they come up with ideas and they hold each other accountable. And they make sure that the money goes where the money's supposed to go. And come up with very, very creative ways when there's not enough to figure out, if we do this and this and this, we can make it work. But, um, Dan's going to give just a quick overview of how we got to where we are today. A whole lot happened in a really brief amount of time. Um, and then we're going to show where we're hoping to go in the next near future. But without further ado.
All right, we've got quite a few slides here. A lot of this is a subset of, of, of a meeting that we had with the Board of Lead Leaders about a month ago. First thing I want to just briefly talk about is the organization itself. And it's not just the church and the school, but it's also the shopping center that's, that's part of this. And Jacob talked about it in, you know, in his sermon today. It's one of the things that we got to think about. It's really not part of us, but it is. I mean, the, the shopping center is a wholly owned subsidiary of Holy Cross. But as far as the books are concerned, it's a total separate entity, but it's wholly owned by Holy Cross. So the, the, the numbers that we're going to go through do not reflect the shopping center, but we, we do want to show you that, that at the end. So the timeline is this, uh, in September of 23, uh, it was decided to go away from Shepherd Staff, which was the accounting software that was being used. And they decided to go with, with Sage Intact with the assistance of the, the accounting firm that we used, Doolin Ward &amp; Dewell. It was about a six-month implementation and, and then it got extended another month. And so that brought us into, into April. The problem at that point was we still didn't have bank reconciliations. We still didn't have financial statements. So that's when Henry and I had, had our first discussion was, was, uh, late April, early May. So they brought me aboard and I was to help get things rolling. And so we did. By mid, by mid-July, we had everything pretty much caught up, I thought, in Sage. But things still weren't great. Sage is a good tool, but it just doesn't, I didn't think it was the right tool for us. And we kind of all, all agreed. So when we got the bill to renew Sage, it was $9,000 or $9,200. That was the annual fee to, to run the software. We said, why, why are we paying $9,200 a year for something that we don't think is working? So we started looking at alternatives and I was familiar with QuickBooks and so was Henry. And so we started looking at that. And lo and behold, we found it through TechSoup for $170 a year. That was kind of attractive. $9,000 savings year in, year out. Much simpler to use, much simpler to implement, training the Lord for free. Sounded a pretty good deal. The only problem was we only had two months to switch it over. So from July to September, that's what we had to do. But we got it done. So by the end of September, I think we had all of the bank accounts linked. We had all of the bank reconciliations done and we're moving along. Not that everything's perfect because it wasn't, because it's not, and we're still working on it. But, uh, whoops, got happy there. These are some of the things that we still have left to do. This is my to-do list. Uh, we still have some cleanup to do with how we booked the, the, uh, shopping center investment, how we do payroll allocations, et cetera, et cetera. I won't bore you with all the details, but we do, we do have things to do. So our financials aren't perfect yet, but within the next couple of months, I hope, I hope to say that they will be. Some of our, some of our fonts didn't quite come through. So you should see, uh, these are different budgeting periods that we're looking at. Uh, before, so i- in '25, '26, we made a change. Before '25, we were budgeting on a, a calendar year. So our, our budget period was January 1 through December 31st. It's kind of difficult when you have a school to budget that way. And so a decision was made that starting this year, '25, '26, would be budgeted on a July 1 through June 30th, uh, fiscal year. So when, when you look at the statements that we're about to see, what you're going to see is '24 was, had a budget for the calendar year. The first half of '25, it's just an interim budget that we based on 2024. And then starting in July of '25, we'll have a budget from July 1 through June, June 30th of 2026. But also keep in mind that we have the ability, the software is flexible enough that we can produce reports by calendar year, fiscal years, months, quarters, et cetera, et cetera. Might be hard for you to see this, but this is a, this is a balance sheet or a statement of financial position, which is what it's called with a nonprofit. So if you look at the, the balance sheet, we have bank accounts that are for, for our operating budgets and we have bank accounts for ancillary items. Our ancillary items are, uh, the PTL, uh, the cafeteria, the athletic groups. There, there's what about a dozen bank accounts for the ancillaries? So in total, as of December 31st, 2024, we had almost a million dollars in, in, in those two main, uh, two groupings of bank accounts. We also have money in, in, in the endowment fund. And at, at the end of last year was 3.5 million. Another thing that we did in 2024, we started looking at the amount of cash that we have in the bank all the time because of the way we're paid. Uh, the state deposits money on a certain schedule. And so we're, we're cash rich sometimes, we're cash poor at other times. So what we decided to do was instead of just leaving that money in our checking account, making .2%, we would do something smarter with it. And, and we put it into Edward Jones, uh, Treasury-backed securities, making nearly 4%. So about 100 times what we were earning. So at the end of last year, we had a million and a half dollars in that account. Now the, the number's quite larger because of the capital campaign. But because of what we did, we're earning about $7,000 to $8,000 a month in interest. A far cry from the $200 that we earned the whole year before. So in total, without the shopping center, our total assets were almost 6 million at the end of 2024. On the liability side, we had current liabilities, which are liabilities due within a year. Those comprised of payroll-related liabilities. We also had the, uh, loan on the office building for about $350,000. So in total, our liabilities are about $363,000. Our equity being about 5.6 million. So financially, we're in pretty good shape. This is, these are our equities. So th- this is where our, our money sits, uh, the different funds that our money is sitting in. Our endowment funds are about three, at the, this is 2023, by the way. And the reason it's 2023 is I still have work to do in 2024 to get it in the right bucket. So at the end of 2023, we had about 3.2 million in the endowment fund. Uh, another 200,000 in the reserve, reserve funds, which is, those are the designated funds by, uh, you know, for memorials or, uh, comfort dog or things like that. Uh, we also have some facility funds, school funds, ministry funds, et cetera. Uh, we have a lot of funds and this is one of the, one of the to-dos that we have this year. We have 99 different funds that we need to review, consolidate and clean up. But that's, that's part of our to-do list. This is the income statement. Uh, again, uh, yeah, we lost some, we lost some headings here. In 2024, so the first column there is 2024 actuals. The next column is budget. The next column is the difference and the next column is the difference from budget. So we had 4.4 million in, in operating income. And when I say operating income, what I'm talking about is, is the, the income related to running the business. It's the, the income from the congregation, the income from the school, external sources, which would be your grants, and then some other, other miscellaneous type income. And the operating expenses then come down below that. And so we had about 4.3 million in operating expenses in the, in the various categories. The biggest category of which is salaries and professional, as you can imagine. That's about 75% of our expenses. So from an operating standpoint, we were $170,000 to the good compared to our, compared to our budget. Because our budget basically said that we would lose $2,000 for the year. We gained 170,000. So that's a good thing. When we added in some of our other ancillary and reserve revenues and expenses, we ended up with it being 86,000 to the good. So all in all, not a bad, not a bad year compared to what we budgeted. The reason we were, we were doing so good is primarily because of the one line. And you can see it up there, the 151,000, is we were under budget in salaries and professionals by 151,000. And why was that? Well, we had a lot of turnover. We had a lot of turnover where we didn't fill the positions. We had a lot of turnover where, where when we did fill the positions, we filled the positions with a lot lower paid individuals. So when you add all that up, it ends up being 150,000. Plus we got in an additional 100,000 from the congregation and whatnot that, that we thought we were going to get. So all in all, it leads to a net operating income, uh, bonus of 170,000. So in my view, we did, did pretty good. First quarter, 2025, same kind of thing. We're actually doing really good in the first quarter, but keep in mind that our fir- first quarter of budget is based on 2024. So again, we've got a big win there in, in salaries and professional. Right now, we're, we're, we're beating what, what our expectation was by, by double. So we've got a $438,000 operating income right now in the first quarter, where we thought we'd have 228. The way the church works is it's very cyclical. We have great quarters, we have lousy quarters. The summer months are going to be, are going to be the bad quarters. So even though that looks great right now, this is cash, this is a cash basis. And so it's, it flows. Any, any questions so far on the, on what we've gone over? These are some of the, the 2025 financial highlights and I'm going to let Henry speak to these.
Thanks. And so to give credit, he left and I'm super bummed. But for a long time, you have been waiting to hear about the employee retention credit, AKA the COVID money. Um, Mark Lang, if you see him, did so much work. And here in a few months, once this is all flushed out, we're going to take some time and, and properly honor him and properly thank him for all the work he put into this. This is one of those things that it's great about my position. I get to take credit for work that I never did, which feels right for standing in the place that we are, getting credit for work that we never did. That was a Jesus reference, if you missed it. Um, the ERC payment, the first four of five payments came through. Um, we were really, really excited and some of the things that we had promised, we were able to deliver on. One of which, um, we are waiting to celebrate this properly until we actually get the final statement. But on May 7th, the church side, this is not including the North Anthony, but the church side paid off the mortgage on the garden and the Wendy's headquarters. So we are, except North Anthony, completely debt-free as of today. Which is a really, really, really exciting thing. So we were able to pay that off. The other thing we were able to do, um, the ERC money allows you to do certain things. One of them was to thank all the people who worked through that. And so we were able to, across the staff, pay out $88,000 in bonuses this year. So that was, um, a long overdue thank you to the people that have worked so, so hard. So that's kind of exciting stuff. See, people are going to show up to the town halls now because they're not going to know. Oh, on that note, just a quick sidebar, we will be emailing out a, a memo of everything that happened at this meeting. That should go out Tuesday or Wednesday. We wanted to deliver it to the people that are here, but that'll be emailed out as well if it's too small for you to see. The other thing, um, capital campaign update. Um, this is when we get to the budget. One of the reasons we flatlined some things is people have been very, very generous and dug deep and given. Um, $670,000 have already been received in 2025. Um, to the total, um, bringing the total to, that number's not right, is it? Oh, 2 million. Gotcha. 2,016,000, I was just reading it wrong. Um, we were able to pay off MKS, which is our contractor. We've already paid them 302. That's for the work done on the roof. Um, they will be starting on this roof very, very shortly. That roof is almost done. So the school roof is so close. They're tidying up to the point that they're doing the cleanser on the top of the roof, which it's a petroleum-based cleanser, which if you accidentally dump over the bucket, smells a whole lot like a natural gas leak. Close enough that you'd have to almost evacuate the school and maybe send out a text message to parents to pick up the kids. No big deal. Um, we've paid 16,000 to Design Collaborative, who are getting the architectural work done. We're hoping to have that done really, really, really soon. Um, Andy and I met with them about all the mechanical things. We've met with them about interiors. So we'll be bringing that to the building committee. And we're still looking at groundbreaking mid to late July. Um, TJ will have our final loan stuff this week and we'll get the loans processed for all the bridge loans. And we'll be bringing that back to the congregation as soon as we have some, some financials locked in on that. And then we've paid 41,000 to LCEF for all the project management stuff. So we're really excited about that. Um, employee raises, those all go into effect in August of 2025. So we were able to do some pretty substantial employee raises. Just to speak to that, about five years ago, they went away from district guidelines. People have asked, where are we as far as district guidelines? Well, they don't exist anymore, so that's kind of difficult to measure. What they did release is a range. And right now, we are falling pretty squarely middle of the field. Our goal is to be right mid to high, but with these raises, we are middle to, of the field. To the point that we're competitive with the other Luther, with most other Lutheran schools here in Fort Wayne. Our, our goal is to be not lead of the pack, but pretty close. That, and then, um, we, as Dan mentioned, we were able, right now, we have about $3.3 million sitting in that Edward Jones account. So rather than making a couple hundred dollars of interest, we're making tens of thousands of dollars of interest. So thanks to this team, your money is, is being managed well, where we're just going, God's blessed us with it. How do we take all those verses where it says steward it well and actually put that into action? So lots and lots of exciting, exciting things happening. Does it go back to you now or do I do another slide? Oh, you get to do this one.
So just one, one more thing with the, uh, there. One more thing with the, the amount of money that we have in Edward Jones. Sounds like a lot, but keep in mind, 1.6 million of that is because of the capital campaign. The rest of it is because of the seasonality of the business and it's great right now. Uh, in a couple of months, we'll be glad we had it. Uh, but we are earning some great interest on it. Uh, when we, we started this late, late November, from November through, through the end of April, we, we'd already had 24,000 in interest. Last month, it was almost 8,000 and this month it should be eight, eight plus. So feeling pretty good right now about, you know, this, the decision that we made. Uh, because you can do a lot of things with a, an extra eight grand a month. We always talk about the North Anthony Shopping Center and, and what it's all about and who's paying, who's paying the bills and all that stuff. It, it is a standalone entity. We don't do the accounting of it. We don't keep track of the rents. We don't keep track of the expenses, et cetera. But what I can tell you, if you look at their total equity line, they have a total equity of 365,000. That's, that's our equity. We're the 100% sole owner. What the, what that's also telling you is that it's making money. It's not making a lot of money, but it is making money. They have 140,000, this is as of the end of 2024. At the end of 2024, they had $140,000 in the bank. So not, not too shabby. They have an asset. The, the fixed asset over there is, is the building, obviously. And the, the building's value when, when it was purchased was, was deemed to be 1.2 million dollars. They have 1.2 million dollar asset on their books. That asset, if you look towards the bottom, there's an LCEF loan for 955,000. For the longest time, that loan was an interest-only loan. Now it's in interest and principal. But Holy Cross, we don't pay it. It's being paid by the LLC. So there's been a lot of comments made that we're supporting it. I mean, we own it. We are supporting it, but it's, it's standalone. It's paying, it's paying its, its monthly principal and interest payment to LCEF. It's paying all the rest of its bills as well. This is a financial statement, uh, the profit and loss for 2024. They had 232,000 in base rent. When you throw in the, the taxes and, and, and things like that, the tenants paid, it was almost 300,000. They had total expenses of about 252,000, net ordinary income of 42,000. They paid some taxes out of that and they ended up with 30, 31.5. Not making a killing, but it's not negative. So I decided to point all that out because this, this is one of the rumors I always hear. Oh, we're, you know, churches, churches, you know, paying all this money for that. We're not. It is standalone. Questions on, on that part of it? And then I'll let Henry get into the 25, 26 budget.
Okay, so here's where we're going next. And this is what we're aiming to report on a monthly basis. So our 25, 26 budget, the church income line, we're right at 1.4 million dollars. The way that projection is found is the Board of Directors sets policies. The senior pastor shall not fail to make adequate, I could read you the whole policy. Pastor then gives interpretations to the board. That particular policy was very specific. It said, you take the last three years' income and if there's no substantial changes to membership, it's that with a multiplier, a very, very small multiplier. That's what you're allowed to go up to. This is actually just under what the last three years' average giving is. And the reason we put it just under, and by just under, I think it was $2,000 under, so that we could have a zero baseline item, which is what they want us to show. And by pay, I mean the lending as a nonprofit. They want to show that you're flatlined. But that's how we get that number. So that's the 1.4. The $3 million number for the school income, that is very simply 398 students in K through 8 times $7,217 of tuition, I think I have those numbers right, equals that $3 million mark. The outside sources, those are the other things. They're more or less flow-through items where we have a grant for a resource teacher that pays the resource teacher's salary. That, it's that kind of stuff in the outs, um, the outside sources. Then we have the garden. Yes?
When you mentioned your school, that you're including the preschool.
Correct, yes, yes. I just didn't have that math on the top of my head. Yeah, the question was, does that include the preschool? Yes, we do the same math for the preschool that we charge this tuition, times this many kids, gives you that number. Um, the other things that are included in that, you also have, um, before and after care is included in that number, a registration fee. I think that's all that's in that line item. But the vast majority of it is the K through 8 tuition. Thank you for asking. Um, the garden, that's primarily the rental for the garden. Um, that number, we're going to really be working through to make sure we have all those things right. So for example, when, when we did all of the fundraising things, the garden had expenses. That is, we still had to pay that person to clean the garden, um, but they had no income. So we're trying to figure out a better way to represent that. But that's what we're, we're expecting to bring in $54,000 from that line item. And then we put in that we're expecting about $80,000 this year in cash flow interest. And that's what Dan just talked about. We get a million dollars. We get a million dollar drop for the school, but we have six months to spend it. So just that interest, when it compounds, gives us a cash flow line. And then we get down there to just all of the expenses, and most of those are same as last year. The majority of the money that we're putting in is to get our staff and benefits where we need to be to be market competitive. We wanted to take really good care of our staff, because the people that work here do a really, really good job, and we want to continue to retain amazing teachers, amazing pastors, amazing vicars, and just pour into them. So we were able to make a, a nice jump there. Those are the only real variations when you look at, when you see it, when you compare the numbers from last year to this year. The staff is the big increase. But yeah, we're looking at a four point eight million dollar budget next year, and I'm pretty excited about that. You're gonna continue to see that go up. What we're working on right now is the projection for the next three years. And when I say we, the person I'd add to that mix would be TJ from LCEF. They're working really hard to say, hey, as we grow, as we add the preschool, as we look at what's going on with the state and tuition, as we look at filling the school, how are we gonna make sure that our financials are looking really, really solid, that we don't take a step backward in three to five years? What are your questions on this moving forward? Oh, there's a microphone right there. And if you can... Are we doing a state your name? Even though, we can get in the habit of this.
Jake Kohler. My question is, do our bylaws state how interest money can be spent? So all this money that's currently in that Edward Jones endowment, when we receive that interest, does it have any stipulations on what it can be used for?
It does not. Interest money is not stated at all. The only restrictions on what we can spend money on is if a gift is given specifically for something, and there's not a policy on this, this is actually law, that if we receive a gift for something, we have to spend it. That is designated, we have to spend it on that thing, unless the donor gives us freedom to spend it otherwise. So for example, if you donated a hundred dollars toward the floor, and the floor costs ninety-eight, we would ask you upfront, hey, if there's an extra two dollars, do you want that back, or can we spend that in the general fund? So we're working on some donor letters when there are those specific gifts. The only other thing that is stipulated is anything that is given to the endowment. We have five or six different endowments, and they have very strict what you can spend it on, how much of it you can spend. Stan Bebrick handles all of that, and he'll give me, at the beginning of the year, it's a printout of, here's what you can spend. And then I go back to him and say, we'd like to spend this on this. He double checks it against what it is. So for example, we have an endowment that is set up for facilities improvements, but it has been deemed that we could not leverage that toward the new building. However, we can leverage that toward, you're gonna see it this summer, the gym floor has not been resurfaced for, I believe, since nineteen forty-eight. That was a joke. That was not funny. Take note on that if you're preaching tomorrow. Don't use that to go get to land. But we're resurfacing the floor. We're utilizing, I believe it's twenty-two thousand dollars in the endowment to get that resurfaced, repainted. Pickleball lines, which didn't exist when we, when we did it the last time. But those are the only two requirements. Otherwise, it's we can spend it however it's budgeted. Now, if anything goes outside of this budget, by, I believe it's more than ten percent, then we have to bring that to the congregation. So we could spend, what, four point five million dollars on salary? But once it crosses that four point six mark, it comes back to the congregation for approval. Is the ten percent wrong? Or I'm sorry, it comes back to the board for an approval. I misspoke there. The board retained. The congregation delegated that power to the Board of Lead Leaders, and if it's anything over ten percent, they give variation.
One plan that I have, though, is to take the money that we have sitting in the account and allocate it based on where it came from. So right now, one point six million of the three point three is related to the capital campaign. The way I see it is the interest on the one point six belongs in the capital campaign, and we'll do that allocation to the extent we can. Any other questions?
You showed the first balance sheet.
And who are you?
I'm Davis. I'll just share them with you. Assets, the first sheet you showed with the balance sheet, are all the buildings, are all the assets on there, how do we handle that?
That's, that was one of the interesting things for me when I looked at the balance sheet for the first time. We don't have any assets on our balance sheet. It's in the footnotes of the financial statements that the reviewed... If you look at the reviewed statements from the CPA firm, it's in the footnotes. And I believe it was like seventeen point some million, the value of the buildings, all the buildings that we had back in 2022 when the review was done. But no, we don't.
I just thought that was interesting, because it's, it's six million dollars plus.
Yeah. We're on a modified cash basis of accounting, and that's one of the modifications. I just, I'd never seen that before. I just thought it was kind of odd.
Maybe even a little superior for me. Why don't we spend in like twenty-three and twenty-four on maintenance, which we're budgeting, twenty-five? Or like building maintenance? Okay, so in the mind, yeah.
I was just curious. We've done a lot of work on the building and the maintenance, and I've had you, we look like we have... The twenty-four numbers was, what, three hundred and ninety-two thousand? And some of that might have been a lot of emergency work and other things we were putting on. Now that we fixed, those numbers might go down. But what were we planning on? I just wanted to see that. What were we planning to spend on building maintenance going forward in the twenty-five budget?
Yeah, so maintenance, what, the twenty-four budget was three forty. We ended up spending three ninety-one. The budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is three thirty-two. And the reason behind that is a lot of the things that we... So for example, we would have had to put the roof in maintenance. That's falling under the capital campaign. A lot of our things are falling in that. However, looking forward, we're putting together a full maintenance schedule, down to every room is gonna be repainted, every... We're getting all the best practices. Right now, we're trying to figure out whether it's three or four years. And so every classroom gets a fresh coat of paint every blank years, and that rolls into the budget. We're doing the same thing with our technology, asking that question, how often do we have to upgrade technology? What's our computer role? We're looking at the floors. So for example, our floors, the protocol is five layers of wax. If we did that, the teachers say our floors don't look clean. When Scott Hinton looked into it, they actually are clean. They're dingy. I'm sorry, let me take that back. Parts of our floors are clean. We'll own also that our maintenance people were missing spots, and they're working on that, and we're holding them accountable to that. But they needed five layers of wax. We had been doing one. And so this summer, we're putting all five layers of wax on, and that's gonna be built into this rotating budget. So that's one of the reasons we're paying LCEF as much as we are, because they're doing those projections to go, how do we really keep this whole new building up to snuff? Same with technology, same with all those other things.
These guys are doing a lot of good work. You're not hearing all the details, but there's a lot of these little, they're not little, right? One thousand dollar savings, eight thousand dollar savings, changes in contracts they're making. Maybe the other guy we should probably thank here, too, is Scott. I think he's done a lot of... Scott Hinton's done a lot of good work, looking at different things and switching and saving money on the benefit package and this. All these cost savings are really adding up, which are allowing them to go back and put into, let's do five layers instead of one.
Yeah, so if you give an example on that, as you go to the mic, go ahead, we'll get your... No. Oh, I wanted to grab you. So yeah, we were able to put forty thousand dollars across the line into staff pockets with the adjustment to the HSA. We also were able to... Scott saved us a hundred thousand dollars in principal. So the total savings on to give people better healthcare, also put forty thousand dollars into people's pockets. This is a cumulative average, like this is across the board, this is in forty K in every employee, and a hundred K returned to our, our budget, which is why we can give those salary increases. So yeah, that's hinted all the way.
My question goes back to the salary with the starting salary, which, praise God, is gonna be like roughly forty-seven thousand dollars. So if you've been teaching here ten years, what's your salary next year, roughly?
I would have to look at the spreadsheets, but it is...
Because we asked that a couple months ago. I didn't personally look at it.
Yeah, yeah. It is scaled up.
So when can we expect to see that? Like, will we ever see, like you said, we're in the middle. So what's the high, what's the low? When do we see those hard numbers of where we...
Yeah, so I mean, if you're asking, how much does, who's been here ten years?
I don't need a name.
Yeah, how much they make. So we won't share those particulars.
No, I don't need a name.
But we will be right along what would be considered scale.
But what is scale? We don't, we've never seen it in years.
Is it comparable? Is there no more district guidelines, you said?
Correct. What they did instead is they said, hey, here's the midpoint for every... So we could, we run it for every individual. So for example, if, if you have been teaching here ten years and have a master's degree, it spits out, here's your midpoint, here's the high end of the range, here's the low end of the range. And so then we base it on that.
Range of what?
Salary range.
What?
Salary range.
No, no, what area? You're taking a range. Where are you taking it from?
That is from, that is what the denomination now provides us. So the Lutheran Church Missouri Synod put out a tool where I would... So for me, I would put in, or not for me, because I don't, I'm not rostered, so I don't get applied. So if pastor is there, pastor has worked X amount of years, he has a doctorate degree, he is in this zip code, it does all the calculations, it spits out, here's the midpoint, here's the low end, here's the high end.
And the synod's doing that?
That it's done by the synod, yes.
Okay, because it used to be everything based off, you had a base salary, the pastor's got a certain amount off of that. And certain increases, it was an increment for everything.
Correct. And they changed that tool about five years ago. They did away with that.
Wasn't that based on zip code or something like that?
The old one, I, I would have to check. I don't know what the old one was based on.
That's what I understood, the zip code.
It could have been, yeah, I'm...
Which is, that's not right here. But with benefit plans, did they drop Concordia?
No, we are still with Concordia health plan. Concordia does both our health and our retirement.
It's all together, because it's the plan, the church's plan, isn't it?
Yes, so we have our healthcare, our disability, mental health, retirement. What's the other one? All through Concordia health.
I'd say for you, how much money you spent, you saved, how much money?
We saved about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Don't they dictate that pretty much?
Sorry, I didn't...
Doesn't the district or, don't they dictate, I mean, tell you, this is what it's gonna cost you? I mean, there's no finagle going on?
There's different plans.
Oh, you're going west.
And so we, we adjusted the plan, we upped our HSA match significantly, and we lowered what the employee pays out of their premium, toward their premium.
So the individuals won't let the pay, you say like fifteen percent, twenty percent?
Yeah, so the employee pays zero percent, where before they were paying fifteen percent.
And they're gonna what now?
Before they were paying fifteen percent.
Yeah.
If their family is on it, so if you add a spouse who is not employed or a child who is not employed, you pay twenty percent of their premiums. We match, what is it? The first six hundred dollars a year contribution toward an HSA, that's fifty dollars a month. We match two dollars for every dollar they put in. The next six hundred, we match dollar for dollar. The next amount up to the individual maximum, we match fifty cents on the dollar. And then if it is a family, we match an additional nickel to the dollar up to the IRS family match.
So you're, you're on the level of the plan that has the HSA in it, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
So...
And we've been on the HSA-based plan for at least four years. Before, we were giving zero contributions to the HSA, and they were paying fifteen percent.
Well, yeah. So someday, so can I go to the Missouri Synod website to look at what they're recommending? Where do I find those high-low mid numbers for salaries?
Let me, let me get you the link. Yeah, I believe you could go in and put in, hey, a ten-year teacher would be making blank.
Well, they're, they're gonna be, they're, I don't want to... I guess my question is, are, and I'm glad that new teachers are making this, I'm not complaining, I think it's great, but they're not gonna be making forty-seven thousand, one thou... forty-seven thousand, like forty-eight thousand dollars if you've been here ten years. That's my question.
No, no.
So I hope it's better than that for everybody else.
Yes, yes, that was...
That's a question that I've got a lot...
I know, because we're all at... I, I have people asking me, and I'm like, I haven't been gone.
This is answered a different way, and let me say it's the same thing, right? So right now, let's say, new teachers are here, and a ten-year old teacher's here, and we're giving the new teachers a bump to this salary, and we're concerned that the other teachers are now...
Right, exactly.
Either, not necessarily below, but not appropriately above where the new teachers are. And what you're saying is, hey, there is a scale, so if we bump these people, these, like rising water raises all...
Correct, correct, yes. Everybody, so, yeah, maybe this is a good way. Right now, the angle is like this. I'd like to see the angle like this, but right now, it's, it's like this. Everybody is making, I mean, the, the average raise across the board last year was six percent. So the person that was making, you know, whatever, is making six percent more, which also does bring them above that, that first teacher. Which the reality is, the first teacher is a hypothetical number, because currently, we do not have any first year teachers hired. We just wanted to get a baseline number so that we could get people above that. But no, it's not, it is not a, this isn't a trick of, yes, we're paying the next one forty-seven thousand, one hundred thousand.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, no. It is not that.
I'll look for that link or find it some...
Yeah, let me...
It's all right.
Can you text that to me, just so I don't forget? Or do you have the link?
I'll show it to you.
Oh, perfect, thank you. Vicker Kohler's bringing that over to you? Vicker's bringing the, he actually pulled it up, so he can show it to you. Thanks. Other questions? And I want to be really clear, just so everybody knows the heart of this. Our goal is to get people paid as well as possible, so that we can attract the best talent possible. And the reality is, if we have a teacher who we did do that and they left, or a staff member that left, it is significantly more expensive for me to replace that person than it is to keep them there. I mean, if it, if we pay somebody, you know, a thousand dollars more to keep them, that serves us well. What I do know is that, you know, I don't pay much attention to how much the individual teacher makes. What I do know is that I've had multiples of them tell me that they were entertaining, wow, can I look at other places? And when they compare our numbers to the other places' numbers, we're better. That's very anecdotal, but that's what they've told me. So I'm, I'm pleased with it, and I want to get better. If I can be completely candid, and I probably shouldn't say this in church, I really want to make the other schools jealous of us. I want them to go, oh, man, if we could get into Holy Cross, we would. That's my goal, in my position.
And you could, you could look at that... You could look at that budget, and while, while it's great that we save some money on salaries, if they're related to turnover, right? You gotta be careful with that, because that could be a bad thing if we're saving too much money in turnover. So if you look, though, at, this is twenty-four number right on the left, right? The three point one million dollar in salaries? Okay, that number's jumping to four million dollars in the 2024. Okay, that number's jumping to $4 million in the 2025 budget. So I think that's a great job by the leadership here in making a significant, significant investment in our people. And like Henry said, there's, maybe there were some people that were, were looking at things, and now those people have run through the numbers of what the 25 is gonna look like in this new plan and said, wow, this is, this is very advantageous for me to stay here. And that's just the beginning. Like you said, they're not done. But there is a significant investment that's been made in the, the people. And I, I got to sit in the meeting where they, where they started to tell some of the people about it, and it was neat to watch the teachers' faces when they, when they told them about the investment that they were gonna be making.
Other questions?
And I would encourage you guys to continue to ask these things. They're, they're not confrontational, they're not bad, these are, these are things that need to be asked and we need to be discussed. So if, if, if there's something on your heart that you want to ask, I really encourage you to, to come ask it. This is what our organization needs for people to, to, to push the board, push the leadership to say, you guys are the bosses, right? So we need to know what you guys want to do, and what you guys are thinking, so. If nobody has anymore, I'll, I'll, I'll make a, I guess, a, a quick closing statement and turn it back to these guys and see if they have any more, and maybe pastor to pray. But as Dan mentioned, you know, we're still not perfect yet, but man, these guys have come a long way. The example I see when I look up at here is, we budgeted, do you guys see the gray line, the net operating income? With the red $2,000 loss? That, it's, again, it's a small example, right? We can't budget for a loss. We did in 24, we were out of compliance with our rules. Things like that we're looking at and cleaning up. But we want to be transparent that we, we haven't caught some things in the past, and then we'll, we'll get those cleaned up and look at them. And if you noticed Henry's budget this year, that was one of the things we talked about, we're not budgeting for a small loss, we're budgeting to break even. So we just keep moving forward, and we're gonna keep bringing you those things if we find them, we'll let you know. That thing, we, we will be transparent with you, and we're not perfect yet, but we keep making improvements. And I'm really excited about where we're going in, in the few years ahead. It's, this Holy Cross is gonna be a great place to, to teach at, to go to church, and, financially, these guys have done a really great job getting these things cleaned up. So I really appreciate you too and your work.
Um, yeah, I've got a mic. By the way, did anyone notice we're all lit now?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, wasn't that, uh, that was something that they pushed along and got done. That was, uh, we would have loved to have had that at Easter, but unfortunately, what is there, all this supply chain stuff and getting stuff here at the?
It was ordered in November. It went in Thursday.
But in God's timing, this is when he wanted it done. We had it for Ascension Day, which is a nice bright day, so thanks so much. These guys do great work. Davis, thank you for your leadership. I think we're trying to, honestly, as Davis said, to just put things out in front of you, you know, and there's no secrets. You know, you ask, we will let you know what's going on. And I know Janet made meatloaf tonight, so I gotta get home, but, and anyway, let's rise and let's, I always like to sing the doxology. We're small, but we'll be mighty, okay? Let's sing. Praise God from whom all blessings flow. Praise Him all creatures here below. Praise Him above ye heavenly hosts. Praise Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. Lovely. Have a great rest of your weekend.